All right, welcome back. We are going to go to our 6.6. 11:00 AM public hearing continued from September 19th, 2023. Consideration of draft ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting agriculture exempt and temporary cannabis processing structure and amending Article 27 of the Lake County Code regarding mitigation fees and amending Article 68 of the zoning ordinance regarding definitions of temporary building types. Director Turner.
Thank you. Whoa, my goodness. All right. We brought this amended draft ordinance to the board last week with the recommendations of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, the Ag Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission. The board made, they approved those amendments to be integrated into the article or into the ordinance as well as clarifying setbacks, adding additional clarifying language, and there were corrections recommended by county council for clarification of the environmental analysis wording. I have before you Cannabis Program Manager Andrew Amalung, as well as two members of our Cannabis Ordinance Task Force available for questions. Before we get started, there was some public input as well as some questions about the wording that was my first attempt for clarification, but it actually sort of made it muddier. So if you'd like to look at in 2G, standard permits for electrical installations. To walk you through this, the, there were questions about what if, you know, the additional requirement of shipping containers wasn't originally included in the use permit? So how would we allow it now? And the program or the processing and the use of electrical for that specific task, the processing, drying of the cannabis, should have been included in that original permit. And so the way it reads, as approved through the applicant's existing use permit, is actually still relevant. However, it is important to note that these temporary structures for our existing permities were limiting it to their already approved cultivation area. The reason for that is because that is the area that's already been vetted. Cultural resources have been vetted, water, stormwater, it's all been examined for that cultivation area. And so because of that, the anticipated environmental impacts are negligible for the temporary structures that are included in this ordinance. Should the permitee wish to go outside of an already vetted area, that's when we would require a modification to the use permit. Andrew is ready to address any of the questions that were included in the public input, and we're all here happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Spatier.
Just a quick question. Quick question. At this point, you are not changing language? You just elaborated on how that language should be interpreted?
Indeed, yes. When I, I was thinking we might need to change the language, but I forgot about a conversation that I had with county council, sort of explaining how it actually all works just the way it is. So we'll keep that.
Anything from county council?
And, and before, just a quick question. My goal is if we all disappear and we have brand-new staff and brand-new board of supervisors, that we don't have to rehash the conversation to understand what this means, because I think it could be interpreted in multiple ways if read through the lens of somebody who has not been involved in the conversation. So I'd love to look at maybe a compromise of change of language such as within the approved cultivation area or whatever the terminology is through the applicant's existing use permit or something of the kind where it kind of denotes that a little bit more, because now it just sounds, since it's connected to the installation of the electrical stuff as approved through the applicant's existing use permit, I think that can easily be read in the sense that if in your use permit, you never offered to have any electrical connections for this, that that means you haven't been approved, therefore you have to revise your application prior to ever going here. And so I would love for it to kind of help us in the future when all of us have moved on, retired, whatever, that it's not something that is questioned.
There are two locations of that in the ordinance, and we could add the clause that just says, "within the cultivation area as approved through the applicant's existing use permit." If...
The thought behind keeping, pardon me. The thought behind keeping the, the language as it was is that if we're allowing for certain additions such as electrical and other kinds of equipment, we're creating an impact. The whole point here was of this ordinance is to create a ministerial permit which would then be, because it's ministerial, would be exempt from SEQA. If we start adding things in, then we would be triggering SEQA because SEQA requires that if you have ministerial elements of a project and you have non-ministerial elements of a project, then the whole project is then subject to SEQA, whether part of it was ministerial or not. So if we wanted these, these actions to be ministerial, we structured the language to allow for actions that would keep it within the realm of the ministerial permit. If we start adding things like allowing certain additions such as certain kinds of equipment, certain kinds of plumbing and electrical and all sorts of other things, we run into the realm of creating impacts that now trigger SEQA and require a review. So the language here is intended that if the individual permitee, and keep in mind, these actions can still, all of these activities can still be incorporated into a permit at the initial stage when an application, an applicant applies for a cultivation use. They could broaden this based on that application because it would be subject to SEQA and it would be evaluated in it. But if they would like it to be a ministerial action, one that's just approved without any other kinds of review, then it needs to be a minimal action. And so this language was designed to be able to incorporate things that were approved already under the use permit that, that would have been evaluated so that we are not adding to that use. So if, if the applicant, so the, so when we added "as approved through the applicant's existing use permit," that means any of the, any of the technology, any of the machinery, any of the extra sort of things that the applicant wishes to use would have, those things would have been approved as part of the prior use permit under which this structure would be allowed as a ministerial permit, if that makes sense.
I'm feeling like I'm hearing two different things.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood your question.
Actually, I think that it would be consistent, and Jennifer can, can chime in on this as well for the cannabis industry, but the purpose of these temporary structures is because a lot of our permities have been unable to construct their permanent structures yet. However, the electrical work and, and the use of electricity for the processing and drying is already included in those permits. So this would be, so that's why for those existing permits, not the ones that are still getting processed that can be amended now before approval, but for the existing permits, it would still be consistent. And Jennifer, you can let me know if that's not entirely...
That would be so long as somebody had put dry structures in their original site plan. There, you know, with market conditions changing, there have been people that didn't have dry structures because they were a fresh frozen model, and so they didn't handle that onsite. So now this is bringing up a whole series of questions of what is, is there ever a modification process rather than starting all over again? Because now you're looking at, you, we can have generators for temporary structures provided you had allocated for permanent structures in your site plan, but yet your overall use permit might say no generators. So how are we going to make these changes amenable and make this a living document that's all interpreted the same from generation to generation of the board and the department? So I think now we've actually gotten muddier. Sorry.
Somewhere it was.
Yeah.
We're going back to the CARP conversation.
Yeah. So I don't know how to rectify that.
So in order to keep it a ministerial permit, we're still going to need to limit it to what has already been approved because the SEQA, our environmental analysis, has been finished on that one already. Outside of that, then for those permities who did not include any sort of use of electricity for processing or drying, then we'd have to take a look at that to see if that would trigger. We'll look for categorical exemptions where appropriate for, but we may need to do a modification to the use permit in that case.
Is there a, do you have a rough idea of how many people did not include dry structures or dry, or dry equipment in their original use permits?
I do not have that figure, but the, I guess, overwhelming demand for this option is coming from projects that already have a processing structure, a permanent processing structure proposed and approved in their use permit, but they're unable to build it at this time. They're looking for something to bridge the gap between now and a few seasons later when they can build it. So, but, you know, the question has been raised. We do have projects that did not propose a processing structure who may wish to pursue this. If they submit an application for this, as Maria said, there's a certain, there's a narrow window of options for categorical exemptions concerning accessory structures and temporary structures. So if they're small and the impact is negligible, it could potentially be an option, but I do not expect to see many, you know, instances of that. Other projects that are still pending approval can factor this into their plans. We have seen some interest in that. People are going back to, you know, the drawing board. They'd like to, you know, plan a first few couple of years, use the temporary structures before I then get my permanent structure and have that part of their overall proposal.
Is there a way to have it be ministerial where and when possible and then have a modification process for those that need it so that we can help those quickly that are in a position to do so?
Yeah, that's essentially what most of the SEQA sections covered in the initial study refer to. You know, as we review these, when we see that they're beyond what fits within a ministerial perimeter, then it would either be a modification of the use permit or an amendment to the use permit.
And how does one modify a use permit?
Maria?
You would submit an application for a modification of use permit, and it would go, after getting processed, it would go back before the same body that approved the original permit.
Yeah, so I think what's most important here is just ensuring that we have a mechanism for a modification if, if that was not already included in the site plan, and also for those who do have a permanent processing structure included in their site plan moving forward. And then just to address Bruno's concern, you know, I think that's very valid worrying about how other boards, how other, other staff members might interpret this in the future. I think that's something that we see a lot of. So I think if we can flush this out as much as possible and get it to a point where we all agree, because definitely if there's varying interpretations of it by this board, surely there would be varying interpretations of it in a future generation.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be a two-part process. I hear the concerns about having some ability to modify a use permit, that that, in my view, would be outside the scope of this ordinance, and it may actually exist in our current ordinance. And if there's some clarification needed in that modification process, we can take another bite at that apple another day if additional clarity is needed. To Supervisor Sabatier's point, I, I'm not aware that there's been a huge push or even awareness of potential modifications of a use permit once granted. But I, I think it's well within the realm of CDD's expertise to handle those requests when they come, and if there's something wanting in our current modification process, absolutely. I just want to compliment staff and all the hard work of the task force. What I see before me in this revised ordinance is great. It reflects careful thought and analysis by county council and CDD. It does, I do want to highlight, because this had come up last week, that on page two at line 23, 6.25, 1B, that it does strike the language that would extend permit eligibility to non-cannabis applicants. It removes the language in addition to those conducting agricultural operations. And I just want to mention that because that was a bit of a bone of contention last week, and I was not able to get consensus to strike that. But I do believe that is the appropriate action. I do believe all the other amendments proposed in this are rock solid. It does establish a truly ministerial permit process, and I'm in full support of this moving forward as is, even if there are questions remaining about how to modify a use permit for certain applicants. If that modification process is initiated, then that permit application presumably could open up application of this once that modification is approved. So congratulations. Lots of hard work reflected in this. Fully support this as presented. Not super supportive of any effort to tweak it further at this point.
Supervisor Spatier?
So I don't see that language in the initial study, and so I'm wondering, the way that the initial study was done was to look at just the addition of dry sheds on their own, which you came up with a mitigated, mitigated neck deck.
A neck deck.
Or, sorry, a neck deck. It doesn't say specifically within the approved application, it just says within an approved cultivation or something like that, an approved permit. But it doesn't specify what's specified in the language here, and I would assume that the way that the initial study, and please correct me if I'm wrong, looked at this addition as a whole, what is the SEQA analysis of that? And so each one that you receive, you would look at to say, no, you're digging 10 feet down in the ground to put some piping, this doesn't fit within what we were looking at. But if it fits, then you would be able to allow that. Because yes, you do need to do a review, but I just don't see that as a, a problem for it to be there. You're still looking at this ordinance on its own because of the SEQA analysis, what the initial study, final decision is. And so it still has to meet that decision. And so you'll work with the applicant to say, no, you can do that, yes, you can't, or no, yes, you can do that, no, you can't do that. But if you didn't have a dry shed within your application, but you're still working within the cultivation area, now we're looking at the analysis of its impact just as a dry shed by itself. Because I think a lot of people, when we started this, were worried about adding buildings because it was such an issue just to go through the, the hurdles of getting the permit process, that they didn't want to add additional things that would delay it much further. And so I think the beginning was very bare bones, and so those people that still are here, that still remain within the industry, they may have a much harder process to get to where we are. Now granted, I'll, I'll say on the reverse argument, there's still time. This will not get accomplished by the time that this season is over. This allows us to go through the next year. This gives them an opportunity to revise their original application and go through a modification, as was just suggested. So I just wanted to speak to both sides, that I think this thing can stand alone because of the SEQA analysis. It doesn't seem to say the SEQA analysis is based on another SEQA analysis, and so that, to me, shouldn't prohibit somebody who doesn't have it in their application to move forward. Unless I'm wrong, and it's inside the initial study that it says, if it was in there and it was approved, then you can go ahead and move forward and be approved here.
So during the discussion last week, there was input that pointed out that using electric or electricity just for odor control was insufficient for what would be required in a drying or processing shed, because electricity would also be needed for the, the fans and the temperature control and things like that. And so that is why that got added in and turned into processing instead of just an odor control situation on drying. And so because of that, which was not specifically spelled out in the SEQA, this is how we could keep it still ministerial.
Okay.
Sorry, just to follow up on that, you know, the initial study does refer to the approved cultivation area. So we're looking at scope of development within that approved cultivation area.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing, the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force is reviewing development standards after we come to you for your conceptual approval of zoning districts and level of permits for cannabis-related businesses. We could address, we could, that would give us some time to see how this ordinance is working out and include that then. The development standards for this ordinance could then be included in that update as well.
Okay. Oh, public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers that wishes to come up? Come on down.
I think initially, no one wanted to do dry structures on their building because 4290 road standards. We worked past that hurdle in 2019, and we got over road standards. So that way, we're all considered ag, like the state recognizes cannabis as ag, and therefore we're able to get, you know, ag-exempt dry buildings, which now seems to be out the door. So it feels like, once again, we are now separating traditional ag from cannabis. And so I just wonder when the day is that the grape farmers and carrot farmers and peach farmers and everyone else, pear farmers, all have to have separate sub-guidelines of what they're doing, just like the cannabis people. I just don't know why we can't continue going down the path of an ag-exempt building and go that, that route. And then if so, how come all of these ag-exempt buildings and facilities have power for themselves? So I mean, talked into the ag commissioner and finding out how they have power in their buildings, like the packaging facilities and places like that. I see our ag, our farm person shaking her head, so maybe I'm incorrect there. I also think, and I'm going to hurt a lot of feelings in this room, and I'm so sorry to say this, I believe the LCCA is not a representation of the people. They have about seven people that attend their meetings, and I attended one of the meetings, and they're lobbyists that they paid with everyone's membership money. Does not represent the people because we're all talking about something, and it was her way, not everyone else's way. So I just hope that the board continues to listen to legacy cultivators. You know, it's like, if you're an Article 72 applicant, I think your word should, should, you know, mean a lot more than what it does nowadays with the new city folk coming in and trying to rearrange our ordinance to their standard when it comes down to it. And I'm not trying to hurt feelings, I'm sorry, just calling it as it is. There's plenty of farmers that I know that do not align with this. There's so many things going on with this ordinance right now, I feel like we're going backwards. You know, ag is ag, cannabis is ag, right the farm, that's going to get brought up eventually. You know, it's going to be a fun one to talk about. I believe our ordinance is being interpreted, the ordinance is being interpreted all over the place because you have different people telling you interpretations, you have different people coming up to your properties telling you X, Y, and Z, and I, I feel as if we had a very clean path going on, and now it's getting muddied. And I, I believe lobbyists are coming in and they're ruining it for the small people. And I don't know if we're gotten to the point yet about dry structures on properties, parcels under five acres, but I believe we have farmers that are farming cottage licenses under five acres. Where's this community farm group looking out for the small farmer? You, you know, a while back, we're all fighting for the small farmer, small farmer. Now we've forgotten about the small farmer because if the small farmer relies on the big guy, then the big guy has a job. And I think we all need to be aware of what's going on, and we need to see that. So I believe that a small farmer, cottage farmer, has the right to dry their product on their facility. They don't need something large.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have anyone else in the chambers? Or anyone else in the Zoom room? We've got two hands up. Do you want to respond?
Just, I want to make sure that we're on the same page, that we still are allowed, this is separate from ag-exempt buildings. We've already addressed ag-exempt buildings, and they are allowed in cannabis. This is a temporary dry structure, separate from that. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page still.
Yeah, I think that's really important to clarify, that we did already talk about ag-exempt structures. Cannabis growers are allowed to utilize ag-exempt structures, and electricity is not currently allowed. If you apply for an ag-exempt structure and you do want to have electricity, you will have to go through a separate building permit application, and that's regardless of what you're farming, if you'd like to have access to an ag-exempt structure. And the reason for that is not to discriminate against who you are or what you grow. The reason for that is so that individuals who would like to use an ag-exempt structure for basic purposes, for storage, do not have to pay additional building permit fees for a structure that's really not going to serve any other purpose than, than traditional ag storage or cannabis ag storage, whatever that is. So that really doesn't have to do with, with crop type or, or otherwise.
Okay. I've got two hands up.
Just a quick clarification.
Sure.
We are changing the ag-exempt mitigation fee.
Yes.
So that if there is power, now it's in writing that you do have to, you will have to pay the mitigation fees, and obviously you go through a different permit. I think that's been a little bit...
Laxidasical in the past?
It hasn't been always exactly the same, depending on who goes to go do the permit process. In the past, I think having it in writing is going to help make sure that it's equal across the board.
I agree.
Yeah. But until something is passed, because it's in this document today, to make that be placed in writing, so, an important change.
Yeah, and to add upon that, that was also, also part of the reasoning to where the task force and coming from the fire districts had suggested calling these drying structures when it was still being considered within the realm of an ag-exempt structure without being a place of employment or human habitation or with people in there and having certain building standards and fire safety standards. That's where the name was brought in to include processing, which does fall under fire district guidelines and would require those building permits.
Okay, we have two hands up. Sarah Bodnar?
Good afternoon. This is Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for LCCA. We really appreciate you turning around this language so quickly. You know this has been a constant need for years now to get a solution, and unfortunately, as written, the language around mechanization doesn't meet the needs of current permities. Bruno, you really nailed it, that coupling the use of mechanized fans or climate control issues with the previously existing use permit is where the, the conflict lies. The, the goal here isn't to make sure everything is fast-tracked through ministerial permits at all costs. The goal is to ensure that there is a pathway to on-farm drying for any existing or new permitee in line with this ordinance. And so I think that's a misinterpretation of what the task force and the Planning Commission and the board directed, and I hope that when we leave here today, we can be, we can have a pathway for everyone, whether or not it's in their existing use permit. Because as Jen explained, when people applied for their current use permits, which was maybe as far back as 2017, they weren't necessarily planning on drying on farm because their farm plan changed or because it was too expensive to send it out of the county to get your product dried. So we need to make sure there's a pathway for everyone, and if we tie the use of mechanized equipment to the previously existing use permit, we're putting people in a can't-win situation. So I'd really like to see those uncoupled, and I don't believe that that was ever the intention. And if the SEQA determination, initial study was written in that way, I think there was a mistake that was made because the task force and the BOF said they wanted to allow fans and dehumidifiers, because you can't dry cannabis without fans or dehumidifiers. So if it was left out, I, I apologize that this may create a little bit more of a delay, but I think we either need to rewrite that or rewrite this section in such a way that says, if your existing use permit allowed for those things, then it can be ministerial. But if not, here's a pathway to do it. As written, it says, it says it is prohibited unless your existing use permit has them, and that's really the problem. So I think, you know, we, we have, I've brought many permits through the Planning Commission, and we've seen the Planning Commission be confused about the generator rules. They banned generators on some farms. We got to bring them back if they now want to dry. Farmers have evolving needs, and it's changed over time, so I want to make sure this language creates a pathway where no matter what, what farmer you are, if you're in the system already or you want to be in the future, you have a pathway to dry your crop, which is all we're really here to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have phone 7257. Go ahead, you can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much.
We're not able to hear you. We're not able to hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, so good.
Go ahead. We're not able to hear you. We're not able to hear you. Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to address Mr. Jennings's comments. Because we've been at this a while now, haven't we, a few years? And I recall back in the day, before I joined this seat, before I joined the county before that, I was trying to herd cats with our first growers association, Lake County Growers. And as we got closer to passing the ordinance, I recall very clearly you standing at that same microphone saying you, our group didn't represent you. And in that same back and forth, in your own efforts to advocate for your position and what you felt was best for the growing community, you can, you ended up successfully convincing this board at the time to impose the cutoff that stands to this day. If you don't have a pre, if you don't already have a water board permit for cannabis discharge that's been approved by the cutoff date, you have no opportunity under our current ordinance to bring an application forward. That's the legacy that came from that. And then you say, LCCA doesn't represent you. Well, in fact, whether you belong to LCCA or not, LCCA does represent you. They do represent the permitted cultivation industry, those who are lucky enough to get through the permit process, get their water board permits, and get across the finish line however they could. I happen to agree, we have created this parallel universe where it should be cannabis is ag. And yet this is, with some benefit of hindsight, the price we're paying for progress. Whether you and I agree is whether cannabis is ag or not. It didn't matter. Five board members at the time we passed the first ordinance didn't agree with that. If I asked the same question today, I doubt anyone, myself included, would say, we're ready for that step. Because we've seen good progress for some, again, that were lucky enough to get into the finish line with the water board cutoff date. We have an industry that we didn't have five years ago. And those people that do have permits in progress and permit applications in process are represented, not just by LCCA, but also by the farm bureau. You know, I mean, I mean, look at, look at what's been accomplished. So it's a very imperfect record, I grant you. And it's definitely not an equitable record, if only because many of the legacy growers I work with didn't get through the finish line. And many of those same legacy growers, if they didn't get a water board permit by the cutoff date and maintain that water board permit, they have been effectively forestalled for years now, years, from even dreaming about bringing forward an application. And now we have a cannabis task force that's been working for more than a year to amend this ordinance. And I certainly applaud their work, and it's important work.
Supervisor Green, we have a few other items we need to get to. So can you make your comments directed towards the agenda item, please? Thank you.
Anyway, I want to acknowledge the imperfection. This is not what Jack Herrera would want. It's not what I want, it's not what you want.
Okay, we're just going to stop this conversation, okay? You had your three minutes. Please, please keep your comments to the agenda item. Thank you.
I'm going to be supporting this ordinance. I think it does represent the industry that exists here fairly. I do believe there are other issues we can't address today that do need to be addressed in some appropriate time. But I'll just leave it at that.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just one last quick effort. On the initial study, it specifies like a plot map. It specifies the grading. It specifies all the details that you would assume would already be a part of the original application for the cultivation permit. And so since it's provide, it's, there's no connection saying the plot map submitted with a correlation to the cultivation ordinance. Since you're asking for every detail that you would ask for a standalone permit, and that went through, does that help us in identifying if it meets the criteria that was reviewed, not only by staff, but also the State Clearinghouse to provide the SEQA results or the SEQA analysis findings? Because it doesn't say anything about a connection to a site map that already preexists and has been pre-approved.
The issue we have here is that the initial study for an ordinance analyzes the impact of the ordinance, not the individual projects themselves the ordinance may approve. So what we're looking here for an initial study on, in this instance, is if you change, if you as a board change your ordinance or the county ordinance in order to allow for this increased use or this change in use, will that generally have an impact on the environment? And then, later in the future, the projects allowed by that adoption of that ordinance would individually be subject to SEQA, arguably. So the initial study now did not analyze and could not analyze the projects that come in the future, subject to this ordinance. It couldn't analyze any of the machinery, the amount of the machinery, the consequences of having machinery on site. It could not analyze any of that. In order to allow for it, therefore, in conjunction with this use, we can, we can connect those uses, or this use that's approved with an already pre-approved machinery used on site. It would allow those who have that preapproval to use that machinery within the framework of where these buildings or these structures are allowed, in conjunction with these structures. If we are, if your board is looking to change this to allow for an increased use, then we would have to recirculate an initial study for the ordinance because the ordinance would then be changing to allow for a greater amount of use or greater use in conjunction with this adoption. And each of the projects themselves may trigger, ultimately trigger SEQA because of the increase, because of the impacts that may be associated with the technology or what, or whatever else you're looking to add in conjunction with this. Future permits are protected in the sense that if you're applying for a permit now, for example, you would just include all of that in your assessment. But if we allow for it now, and we keep adding things that permit holders might have preferred to have included in their permit at the start, then we run into the risk of creating a piecemealing process under SEQA where we're allowing for further impacts going forward that were not analyzed under the original SEQA analysis for that underlying use permit. To make that work here, not just now, but into the future, we looked at the language for this ordinance that would allow as much use of, or at least allow for reliance on already approved, SEQA-analyzed uses. So the underlying use here was, would be the cannabis cultivation permit. In conjunction with that, would have been, would have been a SEQA analysis that analyzed the impacts of potential technology, for example. So fans, which arguably would, could foreseeably have impacts that are noise, odor, chemicals, storage. Depending on the number of them, the size of them, the, you know, all of that would have been analyzed under SEQA, arguably, under the use permit. And therefore, what you're doing here under this ordinance is you're, is you're relying on that. So you're saying that because the uses that we're relying on already have a SEQA analysis under our ordinance, then the adoption of this ordinance now would not have as great an impact because we are not allowing things that otherwise would have been, that otherwise would not have been analyzed, if that makes sense.
I don't necessarily agree, but I will move on. I think because we're looking at temporary, I think we're, we're making a big deal of something that is not a big deal for a temporary that was reviewed for its potential impacts already. What I'd like to do is, so number one, I hate the idea of generators, but it's a part of ag, no matter what kind of ag you're doing. It's a necessary part. But I hope that we can get to permanent electrical connections for those that are going to be doing this type of activity, past the temporary. I hope that people are looking at alternative methods of bringing electricity to their stuff as well. This is supposed to be a stopgap to help for a temporary amount of time. We have a two-year maximum for the general-purpose tent, thank you for reminding me, and a three-year maximum for the shipping containers. Again, the goal is to get to a nice, permanent farm implement that can be utilized. What I would like to know is if it's possible, if this moves on to a second reading, is it possible within that timeframe to bring us back? How many applications are not asking for? And what, what kind of maybe revision you're going to have to be looking at if people approach you for a modification? Even a ballpark figure? Just curious if that's enough time or if that's way too tedious of a chore to go through all that process? Because I know there's over 100 and something applications that have gone through.
It would be a bit tedious. A lot of it, you know, we get phone calls, questions. We know people are interested, but we don't have a record of it.
Okay, then never mind. I think that there's an opportunity, there's a pathway. And at this moment, let's take the step forward rather than not taking any steps at all.
Okay. Action.
Madam Chair, if I may. There is one correction. I believe it's from a typographical change on the ordinance, on the clean version, which is attached and made part of the agenda packet. If your board decides to move forward with a second reading on page seven, around line three, I believe the phrase agriculture exempt, and, that phrase there should be deleted. And if Director Turner would confirm. I believe that's just a typographical change that needs to be made. And so if your board decides to move forward with that, it would be as amended.
Yes, I carried over the original title since it was, since the signatures went on a separate page and forgot to take that part out. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting agricul, permitting temporary cannabis processing structures.
Oh. Need the neck deck first.
Oh, to be read in title only. I'm making it up as I go.
I apologize. So the first part would be a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended, to be read in title only, in which that point, the clerk would read, clerk of the board of supervisors would read the title.
Actually, before that first step, if you wouldn't mind adopting the initial study?
That will be my first step, so moved, adopting that. The initial study, is it 23-13?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then move to approve the first reading of the ordinance. Read as title only.
Yes, ordinance, first reading of the ordinance as amended, to be read in title only.
Yes, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting agriculture...
Skip that part.
Skip that part?
Yeah, skip that one word.
Which one?
Don't say ag exempt.
Exempt and.
Oh.
Go right on to temporary.
And temporary cannabis processing structures and amending Chapter 27 of the Lake County Code regarding mitigation fees and amending Article 68 of the zoning ordinance regarding definitions of temporary building types.
And then lastly, I move to advance the ordinance for the second reading to the next available supervisor meeting on October, is it 3rd?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Would that be, I apologize, would that be date and time stern, so October 3rd? That's fine.
We're good.
Good.
Okay, thank you, everyone.